Good afternoon and welcome to the regular meeting of the Mayor and councilors for the City of International Falls for June 20, 2016. I would ask all to please rise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the remembrance for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd ask the Administrator to note the roll call with one member of the council absent, Councilor Jacksaw. And she may be coming, I have not heard unless you have...
Expect her today.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to the agenda where we have in addition, item number 5 under New Business is a application for an exempt permit for the Bronco Girl Hockey Boosters to conduct a raffle, and also the item number two to be deleted, that that will be forthcoming at another time. Your pleasure with the agenda with the addition and deletion.
I'll move.
Motion by Councilor Briggs to approve the agenda with the addition and deletion.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kaler. Discussion on the motion or the agenda? Question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried, agenda is approved with the addition and deletion. We'll move to the minutes of the June 6 regular city council meeting.
I'll move.
Motion by Councilor Kaler to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second by Councilor Briggs. Discussion on the motion or the minutes? Very none, question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried, minutes are approved, thank you. Go to the resolution on finance, and we have three transfers to Fund Number 101, to the General Fund from the Water and Sewer Fund, $17,715, to Fund Number 401, the Permanent Improvement, from the Water and Sewer Fund, $16,668, and to Fund Number 403, the Reserve for Capital Outlay, from the Water and Sewer Fund, $17,428. Accounts payable claims, we have the City of International Falls, total of $260,050.62, Airport Commission claims of $4,207.40, Library Board claims of $6,999.80.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Councilor Jacksaw to adopt the resolution on the transfers and payments. Second by Councilor Droba.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried, the resolution is adopted, and the transfers and payments
will be made, thank you. Anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the council at this time on something that's not on the agenda? If not, there'll be an opportunity at the end of the meeting for anyone that wishes to address the council, thank you. We'll move to public hearings, and we have the public hearing and first reading of the ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances, Section 6-63, on lodging taxes, and the Budget and Finance Committee has a recommendation on that?
Yes. We would like to accept and... Board of Ordinances with the changes.
And the changes would be that the... Those who are collecting lodging taxes would remit those to the city on a monthly basis versus previously being able to do that on a monthly or quarterly, and so that we would delete the monthly, the quarterly, and the payments would have to be remitted on a monthly basis. A recommendation from the Budget and Finance Committee.
I'll move.
Motion by Councilor Briggs to adopt the change in the ordinance.
Okay.
Second by Councilor Jacksaw. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. I did just want to draw to the council's attention the fact that as the committee had requested, we did send a notice to everybody that currently has a lodging license, and if there was multiple addresses, or they had a agent doing some of the... Giving the lodging taxes to us, we sent it to both addresses, so I just wanted the council to be aware that we did notify the operators of all the lodging establishments of the city of the proposed change, and when the scheduled public hearing was this evening.
And we've not heard any, had any communication from any of the lodging tax collectors?
We have not.
Probably the easiest ordinance in the history of the city.
Any further discussion or questions with regard to the...
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Audience?
So, with respect to the lodging tax, what I'd like to know is who has the responsibility within the city here for seeing that as collective? Without having read this yet, as proposed, what are the penalties in the event there is late payment or no payment?
Do you have a copy of the ordinance?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
City Administrator?
To respond to those questions, it's the city administrator's responsibility to ensure that those are timely paid. If they're not, there is a requirement that a penalty be imposed if it's not paid within 30 days after the date that it's required to be paid, and the city, of course, can pursue legal action if it's necessary, and they can include interest charges as well as penalties, and then the costs and any disbursements for that action. The penalty amount is 10 percent of the outstanding amount due, and it increases until it reaches a maximum of 25 percent of the amount due in the ordinance.
It's spelled out, isn't it?
It is, sir, yeah, Section 663 in...
And that there's no payment, I would point that there's good part.
If there's a repeated non-payment, it depends on what the nature of it, sometimes people just forget to make the payments, we would refer the issue to the city council to authorize the city attorney to proceed with legal action. I think it would vary depending on the timing, but we try to, I think we want to make a concerted effort to notify the people if they're, if they failed to make payment that they make payment, and just make a reminder, sometimes something gets lost in the mail or it's forgotten. Typically, most of the people reimburse the city on a monthly basis, there's one establishment that does it on a quarterly basis, which the current ordinance allows, but with the proposed change, everybody will be making payment on a monthly basis, and it'll become more routine.
Well, is there anything that works, the authority here is to whether or not there is significant delinquency? Individually or cumulatively, considering the number of units that are up there that pay lodging tax?
I think it's, the answer to that question is we've, is everybody's been pretty routinely paying, there has been one establishment that has been delinquent in making payments, and then we've proceeded in accordance with the ordinance and informing them that they have to make timely payments, and in fact, for that particular establishment, it was referred to the city attorney.
What?
It was referred to the city attorney to proceed with collections on that.
Okay.
So... And my understanding is that they're currently, they do have some amounts past due, but they've been current for the recent payments, and we're working through the city attorney's office in that particular establishment. Past due payments are paid, penalties that are due to the city.
Because this is a tax, and generally things are spelled out exactly with respect to taxes, whether they be real estate taxes, or whether they be sales taxes, or whether there be some other kind of taxes here, and my customary view of this is that it was rather lax. Now, this may or may not exist throughout the lodging tax legislation, I have no idea, but my vision for the question is that I believe that it should be tightened up here, and it may be tightened up under the current proposal down here, which when I have the opportunity to read, I'll come to that conclusion, all right? Thank you.
I think the, without a doubt, the city administrator is correct that there's been only one of the lodging tax facilities that has been in arrears, all the rest have been timely with theirs. They did have the option of paying quarterly, so the monthly, there was no need to be making calls to people because they did have that quarterly option, and, but now that they go, be going to a monthly, if this change in the ordinance is adopted, then they would, there would be calls being made after 30 days.
No, Mr. Mayor, I'm very appreciative of the fact that something is being done and moving forward, and I'd also like to call the council to note that initially I brought this to the attention because I lived at the place for a time, and over a period of time here with the other things that are out there that have nothing to do with the lodging tax, the places have been economically viable on a basis, I won't say as current, but on a basis where they don't have to take a Chapter 11 or Chapter 7.
Thank you. Further questions or discussion with regard to the first reading of the ordinance to amend the lodging tax? Ordinance? Very none, then we'll call the question on the first reading.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried, and the first, the ordinance has had its first reading and has passed. That will be on the agenda of the July 5 meeting for the, for the second reading of that ordinance. Move to the new business, and item one is to approve the International Falls Figure Skating Club's request to conduct a Monster Dash 5K run on October 29, 2016, and have that request in the packet. From the members of the Figure Skating Club, your pleasure with that.
I'll move.
Motion by Councilor Kaler to approve the Monster Dash 5K for October 29.
Second.
Second by Councilor Briggs. Discussion on the motion or the 5K run? Question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried, and approval is given for the 5K run on October 29, thank you. Item three, approve the use of the city beach for the Bacchus Triathlon, August 13, 2016, Mr. Ward Merrill. Good afternoon, Wa, thank you for being here. Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I brought Wa Subczynski, our business manager, along also, who can answer any technical or financial questions about the triathlon. I think you have a letter in front of you, and we're simply requesting use of the city beach again, and several items of assistance from the city, including a minimum of two lifeguards on site for the event, an EMT on site, police supervision at the beach entrance, and then some no parking signs, a bullhorn, and traffic cones. And as you said, Mr. Mayor, the race is August 13, registration starts, if they haven't pre-registered, at 8 o'clock, race commences at 9 and finishes about noon out there at the city beach. Please, we're good enough to support this in the past, and we would encourage you to do so for this coming race.
This will be the fourth annual?
This will be our...
Annual, thank you.
An inventory of races, we have a few now. We have a few races going on now, the ultra marathon, this triathlon, and...
Number 5K.
Ice box.
Freezer Gizzard.
I would move.
Motion by Councilor Briggs to approve the use of the city beach and the requests of the Bacchus, citizens for Bacchus AB for the triathlon.
I'll second.
And second by Councilor Jacksaw.
We gotta have healthy people.
Or a lot of dead ones.
Huh?
Or a lot of dead ones.
Yeah, all that running going on.
Yeah. I've attended several, and it's, it's a great, great event, wonderful to see, very well done.
We'll try to have us a family fun for everybody who participates.
It's always a track that a good crowd of, good crowd of citizens to view it and participate, so... You, Muzic, you, any issues you have that you see?
It'll be the county jurisdiction.
Okay, for the direction of traffic, and, okay. All right, so we'll need to contact the county, or will you take care of that, contacting them?
Unless...
Have that...
Unless you want to contact the sheriff.
We'll take care of that, too.
That way we'll...
Sure, we'll do that.
Further questions or discussions with regard to the Bacchus Triathlon? Very none, question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried, approval is given, and look forward to another great event. Thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Item number four under New Business, approve city sponsoring and use of Smokey Bear Park by the Community Wellness Action Council for yard games event on August 2, 2016, Ms. Allison O'Hara. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me the time here, so I gave you a packet of information, I think, that you guys all have. So we are seeking our, I guess, second annual community yard games that we will be hosting on August 2, which again corresponds with National Night Out, and we last year had great turnout, over 150 people, that's kind of when we stopped counting, lots of kids, adults, families came out, were able to do a lot of great giveaways, and had a lot of fun, weather cooperated, which is always handy, so that, we'll be thankful. So we're just seeking, again, a cosponsorship of the city for this event, which allows us essentially to put more resources toward the event itself, and so we've been up to a lot of fun things in the past year, doing the Wellness Expo during Freezer Gizzard Blizzard Race, we've done a swim-off, pool party, most recently, we have upcoming in July, a family bike ride out to Tara's Wharf for free ice cream, and then back to the Falls, we figure that will even out by the time they get back to the Falls, and so National Night Out, having community yard games be a great opportunity for community members to get out, be active, maybe get some information and some wellness-related prizes that they can leave with, and so we would request that of the city to co-sponsor.
Good, you've heard the request for the sponsorship and use of Smokey Bear Park for the yard games on the National Night Out, but it's your pleasure?
I'll move.
Motion by Councilor Droba.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Jacksaw, thank you.
Just refresh me what co-sponsorship entails, I just, we have a policy.
Co-sponsorship is just that the entity using the park doesn't have to get their own insurance and pay the cost for that, and as a nonprofit, the Community Wellness Action Council, one of the events that Allison talked about was the pool party, and that was in part a fundraiser for the Community Wellness Action Council, and so it's, we could apply more money to the events if they don't have to pay for the insurance. Public park, and it's going to be very relief events for the yard games, and so it's, it's a good event and attracts families as well as a lot of young children.
Yoga, I was reading that yoga helps old people with keeping all of their marbles.
Yoga helps all people.
Got to get old first.
I've arrived.
We've actually sponsored a free yoga in the park event, too, so...
Okay, so we should see a lot of people my age there.
Further questions or discussion with regard to the approval of the sponsorship and use of Smokey Bear Park? Question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried, and approval and sponsorship are given.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Item number five under New Business is resolution approving application for an exempt permit for the Bronco Girls Hockey Boosters Club to conduct a raffle to be held on October 19, 2016 at Bronco Arena.
Move.
Motion by Councilor Jacksaw to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilor Kaler. Discussion on the motion or the resolution?
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried, adoption of the resolution is approved, thank you. Item number six is a series of recommendations from the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, the first of those is item 6A, and that's the citizens' request to use the 8th Street hockey rink area as a dog park, and the recommendation is not to allow that based on neighbors who have asked that not to be allowed. Motion would be in order to...
To deny it?
To deny.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilor Jacksaw.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Droba. I deny the use of the 8th Street rink as a dog park. Discussion?
Was there, just, people weren't cleaning up after the dogs?
That was part of it, yes, definitely.
It's not big enough either, really.
One of the things I was proud of, at that specific meeting, we had the people that ran the 8th Street last year, and the flooding of the rink ended up causing some issues too, because people didn't clean up after it, it ended up getting into the ice, and after the fact, even though the ice was laid down, people still adhered that it was a dog park and not an ice rink, so...
I'd park that really, no place.
To my knowledge.
No.
It'd be something we should consider.
They have some, the park over here on 2nd Street, they have bags that people can pick up if they have their dogs, but they don't, it's not officially a park.
Everybody has a dog. Dog park.
Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried, and the use of the 8th Street rink as a dog park is denied. Item 6B is to extend the water line to, from 13th Avenue to the warming house, which would facilitate a much easier flooding of the rinks, right now they have to extend a fire hose some several hundred feet, and having the water line in the warming house would make it much easier for the attendants there to, to be able to do the flooding.
Move.
Motion by Councilor Jacksaw to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilor Briggs. Question on the motion or the water line?
Imagine the cost, it's got to be minimal, because we already have the...
We have pipe on hand.
The pipe, and we have the Public Works being doing it.
Yes, it would be done in-house.
In-house, yeah.
With our, with our own water department. Other questions?
Well, this doesn't, this doesn't get it inside the warming house, it just gets it to the warming house.
I'll clarify that. My understanding it was going to get, move it into the watering, into the warming house.
That's my understanding, it's going right inside, just like they used to.
Yeah, but then they'll have a, they'll have a place to bring the hose out, in the...
They'll put a hole in the wall, you hook up the hose on the inside and run the hose out.
You don't have to worry about the water freezing, otherwise if we use the hydrant, we have to, they have to pump the hydrant down every time, otherwise the hydrant would freeze, and...
That's right, that's right, I do remember that, okay.
Other questions or discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Yes, motion is carried, the water line extension is approved, thank you. Item 6C is to replace the posts and the boards at the 8th Street hockey rink, that money was budgeted this past year, and the, the hockey rink is difficult because the boards and the posts have come up, and so they tried to pack snow around the edges to be able to, to freeze the rink, but a lot of water did escape, and so it took additional water, and they believe with the, the new posts and boards that cut down the cost of flooding that rink. Committee recommends the project being done by the city's street and parks department.
I'll move.
Motion by Councilor Droba to approve. Or second the motion? Member of the council, I would second the motion? Question?
I have a hard time spending money on new boards, because I had a hard time flooding one of the boards, I carry Parker and Shambles, and I'm all for 8th Street Park, but if we're going to be honest, in the long haul, the boards and Kerry Park are going to be used a lot longer, for a lot more years, more than likely, than Kerry Park, or than 8th Street Rink, and I think any money that goes to new boards should be invested into the outdoor rink at Kerry Park, which does get more use, it's not a neighborhood rink, and it's not outdoors, but it does get more use, and those boards need to be replaced direly compared to 8th Street, just because it's harder to flood.
Well, and the, the boards are really in very poor condition, as told to us by the street commissioner, and so it was their recommendation that we replace those at 8th Street, certainly if the ones that Kerry Park need replacing, we ought to be budgeting that one this year also, then. Further discussion? Question?
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
No vote yes, there being three opposed to the motion, and two for the motion fails. Item number 6D is recommendation to place an additional pole and light at the 8th Street General Rink, there's just one light there right now, and to have a second one, there's a map in your... Towards the top of the general skating rink, there's a X there, and that's kind of a pink spot, and that's where the additional light would go, there's one over to the left, and... There's one over to the left, and that would help to light that end closer to 13th Avenue. The committee recommends that the city electrical department would put in the additional pole and light.
Move.
Motion by Counselor Briggs.
Second.
Second by Counselor Kaler. Question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes. Motion is carried, and additional pole and light will be installed. Thank you. Item 6E is recommendation to install a Minnesota Department of Natural Resources fire danger sign in the vicinity of the Smokey Bear statue, and allow the fire department to update the sign as to the fire conditions in the forests around the community. Motion by Counselor Jacksaw to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Drobah. Question on the motion or the fire danger sign? Please.
Do we have a approximate cost for this?
Yeah, the DNR will install it.
Is it at their cost, or?
Mr. Mayor, if I could comment on that a little bit. I had the conversation with somebody in the Little Fork DNR office, and they indicated that they will provide the sign. The committee looked at two versions, one that the state of Wisconsin uses and the traditional one that Minnesota uses with Smokey Bear on it. And the committee selected the Smokey Bear sign, and, but they did ask that our Public Works crews install it, and that as the fire danger changes over time, our firefighters would just go across the street and make sure it was appropriate.
I think it's, I think it's a great idea to put it there, so. I mean, Smokey's been there forever, we should have a sign there, telling them what the danger is.
Those hand in hand, yeah.
Further discussion or questions? Question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried, and the approval is given to the DNR fire danger sign being placed at Smokey Bear. Thank you. Item 6F is to install handicap parking signs and striping on 6th Avenue, just north of the Loop Actuator, and another at the intersection of 2nd Street, and a third at the intersection near the crosswalk on 8th Avenue and 3rd Street. Motion by Counselor Drobah to approve those handicapped parking places.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Kaler. Question?
What's a Loop Actuator?
That turns the light, the semaphore turns the light from red to green, and there's one, it's located just, just right by 3rd Street and 6th Avenue there. But we would have this, the parking place just back of that.
You mean it's not a pole?
Nope. It's a...
It'll be, it'll be on the corner, close to, on the corner.
There's a wire in the street that activates the light. Further questions or discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried, and the approval for those three handicapped places will be done. Thank you. Item 6G is request to change the alley travel directions. We have several alleys in the area of 12th, 13th, and 14th Streets, and they're, which you would call a T alley, because you can enter from three different points on the alley. And the committee recommends that no change be made in the direction of those alleys. Don't need a motion, though. No action is necessary.
Can you give me the background on it?
One family thought that rather than allowing the one leg of the T to be able to go and come, because vehicles meet sometimes, but it's very seldom that they meet, and that there should be a direction placed on that also.
Okay.
It's brought to me that, especially on the alley where the Assembly of God Church and Salvation Army is, because there's a garage right on the corner, so if you're coming in the alley that goes east and west, and you were traveling west, you're not going to see a car that's coming from the north. And they were concerned, because there's probably more traffic in that alleyway.
On Sunday?
On Sunday, because of the church.
But the issue was steady.
But I would make, ask the chief, have you had any occasion for accidents in that alley?
Not there, no.
Okay. That would be my concern. If there've been accidents, I could see, maybe it makes sense to make it change, to make it one way, but if we haven't had accidents, and people do have to use some judgment when they come to the corner, so. Because I drove it today just to make sure I had it clear in my mind again, so. When you're going west, you just got to, you're going to have to turn right or left anyway, so you need to slow down and look and see if there's something coming from the north, so. I don't have a problem with it, then.
Very good. Any other new business? Move to reports of boards, committees, and department heads. City administrator.
Mr. Mayor, council, just for your information, the finance officer position applications closed at 5 o'clock on Friday, and so staff will be doing the initial review of those early this week, and trying to schedule interviews as appropriate with those candidates. I don't have anything further.
How many applicants did we get?
About a half dozen. Not a big number.
Maybe a second question, where did we advertise?
We advertised in the Journal three times, the League of Minnesota Cities, the Minnesota Clerks and Finance Officers Association has a website. Advertised for that organization. Oh, if there was another location. Advertised three times in the local newspaper.
Questions for the city administrator? We'll go to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. We did have the first meeting last week of the Donahue Property Citizens Advisory Committee, and we, different ideas were floated around, and we've got another meeting scheduled in July. And that's finally moving forward, which is good. In regard to the lodging tax issue that was discussed earlier, there has been a business in town that's been consistent. Like, we have been pursuing them, we have actually filed returns on their behalf with penalties and interests added to those, which they are required to pay. We have been in discussions, strength of turnover with regard to management. The ownership is the same, but the management is different. Our owner is in the process of perhaps selling to somebody else. We, the new operator is current in those payments, and we have received a financial partial payment on the arrears from the owner, and promises to continue making substantial payments on a monthly basis going forward. So hopefully, we have turned the corner on that. I think the change in the ordinance that requires a monthly filing will be helpful. Helps us stay on top of it a little bit more and not get so far behind. And we do have the option. We haven't yet taken it in this case, but will if the promises aren't maintained, and that is, we can criminally prosecute them. And under our ordinance, it can be criminally prosecuted as a misdemeanor. I think it's also conceivable that it could be prosecuted as something more significant than that because of the amounts involved, if that becomes necessary. So we do have tools at our disposal, and I think we are, the city administrator's office has been very good about keeping me informed, and so, what actions to take or not take at this point really fall on my shoulders and not on the city administration. They've done their part, and it's in my hands at this point. All I have.
Thank you. Questions for the city attorney? Thank you. We'll move to department heads. Chief Music.
Mayor and council, just a couple items. Last week, I received a call from a concerned citizen on River View Boulevard about... Questions in the past. What I'd like to do is maybe meet and committee... Also, I've been working on a couple of tougher light issues. What the people I'm working with are...
Well, on your earlier request on River View Boulevard, we'll have an infrastructure meeting and ask you to be there. Thank you. Thank you for working on the blade issues. Questions for the police chief?
Yes, I do. I thought there was not much we could do, because that was, you know, I did a survey of that, and...
Well, yeah, and...
And I understood that we can't just drop the speed limit on streets.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to talk about it, because I didn't want to come up. Down the discussion with the person I sit, and I have an idea or two, whether those ideas will work or not, I don't know, but I explained some of the things we've done in the past, and they don't work, but yet. It's kind of ironic, because sometimes the people that complain are actually... Problem rests right there in the neighborhood, so I kind of... It's all up to the people, whether they want to take care of the problem or not, it's just...
There's no sidewalks there.
And the road is... I can't bother with it.
Part of the problem is you've got people walking in the street, you know?
And the street condition, as the chief said, is very poor.
And, you know...
I mean, you've got to walk in the street, so.
And a lot of the problem lies in, if it's not posted, the speed limit's 30, but if you're going over 20, it's too fast in that neighborhood, and it's... Look at the speed, and people don't...
Because I did work on that, and it never came to any...
Oh, yeah.
All right. Well, I hope...
Yeah.
Mayor, we could keep Counselor Jacksaw informed of the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, so you can weigh in on that, too, if you'd like.
Very good, thank you. Reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. Please, Counsel Drobah.
Last week, I attended the League of Minnesota Cities Conference in St. Paul. It was a joint conference with Alliance for Innovation, so it was a different setup than what I've dealt with with other League of Minnesota Cities conferences. The big push that they had in this particular conference, along with so many other small classes, but I took a lot of the Alliance for Innovation classes. The points that they were trying to make is, how do we make our cities ready for tomorrow when having to deal with pothole issues today? There was some really good information, not a lot of handouts. I love handouts, because I can bring them back and show you guys. There wasn't a lot of those this time. One of the things that I did notice, though, is I sat in on a couple of classes on law enforcement and working with that. I also sat in on some for the fire department, and the more I got the information, the more I realized, they were speaking to, speaking to Chief Manasa, and I think that it would make a lot of sense for some of these events, when we get the package for the League of Minnesota Cities stuff, to get some of our department heads down at these conferences with us. And that way, we can sit in on these conversations along with the leaders in our community, because there was really good stuff that I got out of this. But then, without having the technical expertise of our other department heads, I just don't know how we move forward with, with a lot of the good information that we have. But it was a very good conference, and I greatly enjoyed the yoga and the cardio kickboxing. I got kicked out of the yoga class. I did not get kicked out of the cardio kickboxing, but the yoga, I just couldn't do it anymore, because it was, it was pretty strenuous. And kickboxing, I can continue that all day, but...
You have to put your body in such weird positions.
Yeah, it did, and it was in Rice Park, and there was a hot dog truck just getting ready for the afternoon, and it, things weren't going well for me.
Oh, you like hot dogs?
Yeah, I love hot dogs. So that was the conference. It was a, it was a very good conference, but I would suggest, next time we have a conference with the league, that maybe we do bring some of our, our department heads with for really good information that's more specific to them. A little bit outside of, of the city business, but I do want to thank Chief Manasa. Last week, we did a flag retirement ceremony for the VFW in the park, and Chief Manasa came out and helped us cook hot dogs and stuff for, for the people that attended. It was a very, very wonderful event, and I just wanted to extend my thanks to Chief Manasa for that.
Other council committees, boards, or commissions?
Well, I have, the garbage pickup is going to be on Saturday. The chair of the committee of the House of the Residential and Commercial Advisory Committee, we got to change that name, too many syllables, is here. Joe, would you like to add anything? Because I know we talked earlier today, but to what we're planning on Saturday in the way of support?
A little snafu. The city is a dumpster for grass flipping.
Helps clean up the city.
Trying to visualize folks dumping into a dump truck, and they're fairly high, and they're thinking, how are we going to, we're going to have to have a loader that they dump it into first, and then dump it into the truck, and just...
I'll bring a ladder.
Not sure that's...
You haven't been listening to the ladder commercials on the radio, have you?
No, I haven't.
Yeah.
Everybody's going to bring them in bags, that would work.
That's the way they have to take them.
You got to get them, they got to get them in some...
Well, then you'd be able to throw them in the truck.
You were going to cut them into the dump truck?
No.
Dump truck? You were going to cut the bags in?
Throw the bags into the...
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
I've got a dump trailer. Where are you going to do it at?
Carson Loopy.
Carson Loopy.
Dump trailer all over there.
But move to your...
For your eastward.
He was Brian's personal...
Yeah.
And, you know, if you're going to cut the bags and put it in there, that's fine,
because I've got a tarp system that, that we can put over it, so on the way to... because I've got a TARP system that we can put over it so on the way to the dump, it's not all going to blow out, so.
Thank you, Joe.
And I'm guessing we could probably get five, six yards of material in there.
That'd be perfect.
That'll be great. Thank you, Brian. And you do, I have an interview that day. You have that interview that morning, remember?
That'd get me out of the interview.
No, no, no. And so what, a group of us did deliver flyers. It took a little longer because we needed more people, but we got them delivered. But it was, I know you are all aware of the condition of, but I'm, what I've decided after doing this is that we do need, we don't have an ordinance on trailer parks because nobody should have to live in mud, you know, really. And I was appalled actually at some of what I saw. Angry is the, you know, so.
Forward to the success of the cleanup and...
Well, you know, this is, this little venture has made me as one member of the committee want to put trailer park ordinances up higher on our list of recommendations to the city council. So it is, you know, good work we're doing really.
Better time.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilor Briggs, for your contribution to that trailer. Thank you.
Because it's long enough, you know.
Yeah, I really, yeah, it makes it possible, so thank you.
Have to dump it twice, we can dump it twice.
Further under council committees?
I'm just going to announce today so everybody knows, so other people can make plans, I'm not going to be seeking reelection as councillor at large. So if people are, they're thinking about it, it's not that far away, August when you've got to make the decision. So I just want those people out there that are thinking about it that I'm not going to be running and that, I'll say more later, but I, you should if you're thinking about it. You'll learn a lot and it's been a good experience, but I just want to give people the time to know that the seat will be open. Not that I was assuined anyhow, but just so they know if they're making plans.
Well, I think you were assured.
Thank you, Councilor Kaler. Further on council committees, boards and commissions? We'll move to the audience. Anyone in the audience? Mr. McCarthy?
I'd like to address the topic first of notice of meetings here. And one of the things I've noticed here is that there's been a real improvement in the notice of meetings that the public may be interested, not only in the council here, but in the various committees and other meetings that may take place that have to do with the affairs of the city of International Falls. I have a request here of the city here that they encourage the KEDA here to see that the notice for the KEDA meeting is also posted over at the county. In the most recent meeting of the KEDA, where I found out that the meeting was taking place in the chambers over at the courthouse was from the bulletin board down here on the second floor of the city hall. When I went over there to check both boards, the notice was not there. So I went up to the coordinator's office and Mrs. Briggs was not there and so I talked to her assistant here and she said, oh yes, I got a telephone call here that this meeting was taking place. So it indicated on the notice that the meeting was going to take place here at the chambers or for the commissioners. Well, I happen to be go there early because, sometimes I go there early to these meetings because it allows me some time to do some reading and may not have anything to do with that, but it's a place where it's generally quiet. Well, about 10 minutes before, before that time, Commissioner McBride came in and said the meeting's not going to be here. It's going to be upstairs here where the Veteran Service Officers used to be. Well, I didn't know reason why than that, as long as the meeting was going to take place. So apparently, most of the people that knew or had an interest in it, with the exception of Attorney Shimon, had known that the meeting was going to be up there. So consequently, Attorney Shimon here arrived 15 minutes late. Everybody else is sitting around waiting for the time here because he, his attendance was required. So I emphasize the importance here and I compliment the city on paying attention to my comments here. The city and the council are also involved in KEDA. It's not a one unit deal even though the facilities of either or can be used. So to me, it would be a good idea here, particularly in this instance, because that it has to do with the main topic of the time was a potential sale of property that, I don't know who has the title of the record. I assume it's KEDA and maybe you can enlighten me on whether it is in the ownership 100% of KEDA or not.
There'll be a meeting tomorrow. There's a meeting tomorrow at 10 to discuss that.
And where's that meeting?
Over at the county.
I know, but we're so quiet about who the ownership is here today.
I've never studied, it's my understanding that it's owned by KEDA, but I've never...
Well, I haven't looked at the records either here, but nevertheless, it appeared here at the KEDA meeting and there wasn't anything in writing as far as a request for consideration and I think on a sale, the minimum should have that. And also as a result of your comments, Attorney Shimon, the conclusion, well, I won't say the conclusion, the comments made that where the properties are owned by a governmental entity is not an unusual practice for a hearing of some type here or public notice to be promulgated. And in this matter here, if it's a sale of five lots for $1 here, even though you regain taxes, a $1 sale as far as my understanding, under an economic development program, is, has a requirement that there must be an increase in the number of jobs that will be created. So I mentioned this kind of thing because personally, I'm in the dark here about what is going on here with respect to that. And there's only one other question. Is a hearing scheduled here for tomorrow that will be final of some type with respect to a potential sale?
No, tomorrow's a meeting, as I understand, as a regular meeting. There is a requirement for a public hearing and if KEDA tries to move forward, they will schedule a public hearing. There will be documents that can be reviewed by the public before the public hearing and all of those things will take place. The discussions now are just preliminary.
Okay. 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 Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Anyone else in the audience? Wish to address the council? You. The list of correspondents is there and reminder that the city offices will be closed on Monday, July the 4th to observe Independence Day. The next regular city council meeting is Tuesday, July the 5th at 4:30 PM. Nothing further to come before the council will stand adjourned. City administrator?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to pass on to the council and I passed out a small folder like this. Somebody had stopped by the city office today, Kathy Johnson, and indicated that there was a dedication ceremony for the summer sculpture and it's scheduled tonight at 6 o'clock and it's at the library grounds by the sculpture. So it's on the parking lot side of the library and I was just bringing it to the council's attention as well as anybody with the public that might be here would be invited to attend that. So it's just a reminder and doing that on behalf of Kathy and the sculpture.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. There's nothing further to come before the council will stand adjourned. Thank you.